I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting for April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five to order and ask everyone to put their cell phones in silence. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor and the pledge by Councilman Heck.
Definitely, Father. Thank you for the opportunity to serve as citizens of Apache Junction. Give us the wisdom and clarity to make long-lasting decisions that have a positive impact on this community. We also would like to have you have a watchful eye over our men and women in the military the world over, as well as our police, fire, and EMT in this community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Present.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nesser? Councilmember Soller?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent agenda. As a reminder, all items under consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request must be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, move on to awards and proclamations and presentations. Proclamation of twenty-five years' service, Matthew McNulty, Carla.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have the special honor of recognizing a member of our team with whom you have worked closely and know quite well, and that is Mr. Matthew McNulty. This month marks Matthew's twenty-fifth anniversary with the City of Apache Junction, which twenty-five years with any organization is certainly an impressive feat, but particularly in the realm of public service. I think it's extremely noteworthy. For those who may not be aware, public service is actually in Matthew's blood. His dad also dedicated his career to local government, and I can't think of a prouder continuation of that legacy than his tenure here in AJ. As many of you could probably attest, he is a walking encyclopedia of all things city history and has played an integral role in every single piece of our public-facing communication assets, from our website to our video and photo, our meeting broadcasting, our state of the city. The list goes on and on. So we are certainly grateful for the opportunity to honor him in this way tonight, and we want to express our sincere gratitude for his time and dedication, how proud we are. And I think before we turn it over to our guest of honor, we're gonna have our city manager, Bryant Powell, say a few words.
Thank you, Kayla and Mayor and City Council. It's my distinct honor to have been able to work alongside Mr. Matthew McNulty for a big chunk of the time. And I have a few photos to share with Matthew, hope it's okay. Twenty-five years, right? And a lot of fun times, a lot of memories. And we see so much in our world, and what we don't always see is the person behind the camera. And so tonight, we honor him, who's been broadcasting so much with our multimedia, but also setting up and establishing the practices that we have. So here's Matthew, and here is Matthew. State of Arizona, city of Apache Junction, city employee Matthew McNulty, multimedia producer. That actually is awesome. I don't even remember those, but yeah, thirty-two? There you go. One of the big changes that Matthew guided us through was moving from the facilities that he and I worked in at the beginning, a temporary facility that lasted from nineteen seventy-eight to about two thousand three. And early on, so I started in oh-one. Matthew, when did you start? Twenty?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, twenty-seven, twelve, yep.
Yeah.
We were just getting going with the internet and broadcasting. If I remember right, it was like a reel, right? It was like a PowerPoint that was on our Channel eleven to get that going and to communicate. It's often difficult to help so many people understand all the intricacies that go into a local government. But I wanted to read something that's very neat here in this article when we had newspapers. McNulty, a graduate of Apache Junction High School. And he is in front of these really modern monitors and controls that help us today, and then, of course, has guided us throughout the process here. Holds a degree from Arizona State University and has guided us again so much through the changes of technology and how we can broadcast out to the community our Channel eleven. This also was a big part of Matthew's role as emergency preparedness and being able to communicate to the public. This is a picture of Matthew working on and dealing with emergency preparedness and getting our timeline ready for potential of anything. At the time, we were worried about a bird flu, right? And then, of course, Matthew in different areas with the community. Has been such a big part of Great Day in AJ's, and again, multimedia producer. We love working with Matthew, so many great memories. Very eagle eye, right? Getting things settled in there. Dog park. For me, it's just been an honor to work alongside Matthew through these years and to be able to help support the communication. I remember early on talking to his dad, who was at one point a city manager. And Matthew's mother as well served in so many different ways in our community and in the Chamber of Commerce, and just a staple in our community. So not so much want to share tonight, my appreciation of Matthew is Apache Junction, and we lean on him a lot to help us understand like the dynamics in here. So if everyone, before we do the hardware, I wanted to ask if everyone would please join in with me in giving him a great hand. As part of our service award program, twenty-five years of service, that's tremendous. City of Apache Junction proudly presents forty hours' time off. Well deserved.
You gonna let him take it?
Yep. And then his.
You'll get to take that when you retire.
Thank you for twenty years of service with the City of Apache Junction and certificate. Matthew, please come here and we'll get a photo, and then I will turn the mic to you, okay?
Get the balloon in the picture.
Yeah.
With me tonight, of course, with my wife and my youngest son, Ternan, Robin. Nicole's here, my good friend Roger Hacker, our former grants guru for the City of Apache Junction. I see Tammy and Catherine, both good friends that we met here in a Parks Program at the library before any of this here was built. So I'm so happy to see they come to this. And then, of course, to my work, my new work crew, Kayla, Gina, and George. It is so exciting to have a real marketing department. It's great, I'm very proud of this girl here, thank you. You guys come up for a quick picture?
Bring the twenty-five with you.
Put it on your belt, oh.
Perfect.
Good call.
That's what I just.
Yeah, that's perfect.
It works.
All friends?
Thank you, come on up, you guys. Oh, I have to my other two kids.
Hey, Roger.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, forgot it.
Oh, no, you have to wear that for the rest of the meeting.
Tie up a horse here, so I'll just tie those up. It's been my distinct pleasure to live and work here for darn near thirty-eight years. So many changes, and alls I've really tried to do is reflect the community. You folks that live here, I've been here too. So I hope I've done right by you, first of all. And second of all, I hope I've done right by this organization. Bryant's been with me, came in one year after me, and we moved over. And then Matt joined us and has been an excellent boss as well. So I just, in lieu of last night's long meeting, I'm gonna keep it really short and just say thank you, and I appreciate everything today. Thank you.
I'll back to work.
He's actually not going very far.
He's working.
He's working.
Okay, I have a couple of proclamations here to do. First one's gonna be National Arbor Day. In eighteen seventy-two, the Nat, excuse me, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products, trees, where they were planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth as National Arbor Day. And Liz?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, members of council. I'm Liz Lingback, the Parks and Recreation Director. So we're here to celebrate National Arbor Day or to proclaim that date here at the end of the month. We celebrate year-round here in our city. Jared Grimm, he just kicked off April with our Earth Day event, and we highlighted trees, did a lot of really neat things with trees at that event. Elliot Anuda, our new Outdoor Recreation Natural Resources Coordinator, and Shawna Hash, our Parks Maintenance Supervisor. They will be representing us at the state Capitol later this week as we receive our second year's designation as a Tree City USA member. We're super proud of that. And this year, we met many more criteria, so we're also receiving the Growth Award this year, and they'll be going to accept that later this week. Elliot and Shawna will also be celebrating actual National Arbor Day on the twenty-fifth with a tree planting at Four Peaks Elementary School. They're gonna be planting a memorial tree for one of their students in the center of their campus, so our team has been working closely with them for that. And then, as many of you know, we just wrapped up the SRP Right Tree Right Place Program. Expanding our urban tree canopy is super important in this community. The mayor mentioned so many things of why trees are so important. We replaced thirty trees that were in jeopardy of interfering with power lines with ninety trees, all throughout, replacing those ones, but also all throughout the community. And then I just wanted to point out another reason why we got the Growth Award. We salvaged three hundred and fourteen native trees out on the Blossom Rock or in the Painted Sky property. That's just what was utilized at Painted Sky and in the Linear Parks. There was another three hundred-some salvaged trees that were native, that were used all throughout the Blossom Rock community. So we're all definitely doing our part. We're really proud of our city. Here Arbor Day and Earth Day are every day, so thank you.
Thank you. International Dark Sky Week. The City of Apache Junction is committed to preserving the natural beauty of the Sonoran Desert, ensuring that the clear desert night skies remaining a valuable resource for residents and visitors alike. And whereas the Sonoran Desert is home to dozens of species that rely on undisturbed night environments to thrive, and whereas presentation of natural nighttime environments is essential for protecting the local wildlife, health, and well-being of residents and reducing of the light pollution. And whereas the City of Apache Junction recognizes the importance of dark skies practices supporting local tourism, enhancing quality of life, distributing in the city reputation as being desirable destination for stargazing and outdoor recreation. And whereas Dark Sky International is globally recognized authority on light pollution, has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution, providing free education, resources, solutions to public and to the courage protection of and enjoyment of dark skies. Now therefore, I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim April twenty-one to twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, as National, excuse me, International Dark Skies Week. Kayla?
Kelsey.
Kelsey, excuse me. I just saw a K. I was wondering if you were gonna come up and get it too.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Kelsey Shatnick, I'm a planner on staff. And I just wanted to get up here and say thank you for all of your support of the city's dark sky efforts, as well as recognizing the twenty twenty-five International Dark Sky Week. As you know, the city is pursuing a designation of an urban night sky place at City Hall Campus. So I wanted to take this time to just give a brief update of where we are at with that application. So as you may remember, the primary item that we needed to complete in order to submit our application was the retrofitting of all outdoor onsite lighting. To do that, we've split the project into two phases. So Phase one is essentially City Hall, as well as the Police Department and associated parking lots. So that retrofit was completed towards the end of the summer in twenty twenty-four. And then Phase two is basically everything else on campus, so the MGC, the library, parks, as well as associated parking lots. That retrofit was primarily completed in the winter of twenty twenty-four. And currently, we are working to complete a few outstanding items that were found during the Phase two retrofit. So you know, what does that mean for our application? We have submitted a preliminary draft to our dark sky liaison for comment. So hopefully, we're gonna get comments back within the next few weeks, and we'll have a better idea of where our application is to being formally submitted to the committee for review. And then, in addition to that, so that's kind of where we're at with our urban night sky place application, but the city is also implementing other ways to become a more dark sky-friendly community. We've completed seven sports field lighting retrofits, and all seven have received their Phase two certification and will soon be announced as dark sky-approved outdoor sports lighting. So a lot of good things happening within the city in terms of dark skies. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, but again, I just wanted to say thank you so much for recognizing International Dark Sky Week and supporting us, and hopefully, I'll be back soon with an update on our formal application.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor?
Great job, Kelsey.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to just let everybody know that the reason why we have this dark skies is because of Vice Mayor, Robert Schroeder. He's the one that started this, and I applaud him for doing it, because I really enjoy my dark sky, and I love being able to look up and see all the stars. It's wonderful.
Thank you, Daryl.
Okay.
Well, that wasn't roaring or anything.
Regional intergovernment meeting updates for council. You have something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Folks, recently, I was appointed to be on the board for the East Valley Partnership. And first meeting that I went to, they kind of gave us an update on the semiconductors and that business here in the valley and Arizona as a whole. One of the really interesting things is the massive need for data centers and the massive need for power. But one thing that really blew my mind is where we're at in the semiconductor world. You know, everybody knows what a gigabyte is. A lot of us probably know what a terabyte is. But nobody probably understands what a zettabyte is. And if you took a DVD-ROM disc and stacked one on top of another, that stack would go all the way to Mars and halfway back to Earth to get you to one zettabyte. That's just mind-boggling. So do we need that? Yeah, we're getting close. We're, you know, the graft is going straight up. So the technology is just changing tremendously, and AI is really spearheading it. And that's why you see all these data centers coming up. The other thing I attended was the monthly Pinell County Breakfast, and the topic there was power. And the massive need to power all these data centers is what's very, very important. And all of our power community, power utilities, both Tucson, APS, SRP, and then also some private industries are doing everything in their quote "power" to bring us more electricity, more sustainable electricity, and exploring every avenue that's out there for us, so that's it.
You, sir?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. I want to take an opportunity to highlight some information related to Lost Dutchman Days. And I know we're, you know, we're about two months post-Lost Dutchman Days, but there's some information I think really would be helpful for our residents to know about what went on and how the success we had from that event. So attendance, we actually had just about twelve thousand people came through the gates over those three days. Now, that doesn't include the many, many volunteers who gave of their time, the sponsors and the vendors, so you could probably add another thousand to fifteen hundred people that were there. So we're probably talking in the neighborhood of fourteen thousand people that would have come in a part of that event, which is wonderful. That's, and that's why it's the signature event. But I also wanted to take the opportunity to highlight the organizations that contributed so much to the success of that event, as they do every year. And I'm just gonna list them or mention them by name. The Boys and Girls Club, the Eagles Lodge, the Four H Club, the Elks Lodge, the AJ Little Lake, the Cleanup, now that's, you might not know Cleanup, that's Trixie. If you don't know Trixie, you need to one day meet her. She's, she was the one who drove around in the gator during the time. She is a pistol and marvelous with cleanup. The city's Parks and Rec Department, the Lost Dutchman Days Queen Royalty, the Rotary Club, Kiwanis Club, the Seroptimus International, the AJ Community Food Bank, Impact One, AJ Chamber or the Apache Junction Area Chamber of Commerce, the Superstition Mountain Promotional Corporation, and the AJ Mounted Rangers. That's many, many organizations that had, and they're all volunteers. So these people gave of their time. And the total amount of money that was distributed amongst those organizations was about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. That's why this event is so important. It's not, it's not just because it highlights the city and gives visitors a chance to get to know who we are, but we raised some very serious money to support local organizations that support. that support our children and youth. So, I thank you all for those that volunteered or for those that attended, because it makes a, it makes a world of difference in the lives of children, and also it brings the city some attention and public, you know, the public relations part's important. So, thank you.
Anyone else over here? Well, I got a couple here. First off, the unfortunate thing is I attended the Battle of the Bulges, not the Bages. That's the, the Bulges. The Apache Junction Fire Department and Police. And unfortunately, our police lost again to the fire department.
What?
And it was an interesting game, and it was fun to watch and cheer them on. Better luck next year. Okay. I also had the opportunity to go down to the LG facilities just down south of us, which is in Queen Creek, and attend and see what's going on down there and get to meet some of the people that are involved in bringing this whole operation in. And it's a huge facilities that's ongoing. It's going to be a huge employer for the entire area, and it is something that is going to be fairly close to us, and it is something that is going to be really, you know, beneficial to our area as well. And so, it was an opportunity to share this and to see it. And of course, we have a, over here at the Community College, a classrooms that are going to be doing, I'll say, hands-on with the equipment that actually is going to be used in the facilities. And they already have their first employees hired that are going through the classes right now, and they're looking forward to starting everything late this fall. So, it's something that's coming up fairly quick and fast. And one other thing that we all attended was the Police Department's annual awards ceremony, where we all got to watch the police as they presented their awards to the police officers and watch some of them as they came out and received their, their awards and got to see several of them. And of course, there was, I'm going to say, the introduction, and it was all done fantastically with help from the superstition fire department as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brian Powell, City Manager, just wanted to highlight one area of our annual Police Department Awards Ceremony is the family and detective Dylan Cannard. Matt, if we can keep going. Of course, our staff were highlighted, and tremendous thanks to them each and every year in every, in every area of public safety, our youth, cadets, cadet program. And then the next one is officer, or detective Dylan Cannard, who is the Apache Junction Police Department Officer of the Year. And we are so grateful for, for our officers and everyone involved with our public safety helps keep us safe, and just wanted to highlight that piece of that area. And then as far as Police Department, we're working on a basketball team now, Chief, right? I don't know what it is about the fire department, really good at baseball, softball, so.
Well, all they do is work out.
Yeah. Thank you for saying that. I appreciate that.
Sir, what was the score?
I, I, score, you know, we.
Score, Chief, what was the score?
It was 15 to 3. Did the losers get trophies too?
Like the Bad News Bears?
Brian, I will say, I will say that I play softball every single Thursday. I play in tournaments all the time, and they were using two different softballs. I noticed that when the PD was up the bat, it was a squishy ball, and then when, when fire department was up the bat, that ball was hit solid and hard. They had a couple out of the park. I mean, your ball, I swear to you, it did not carry. And I tried to pay off the ump and everything, but he just wasn't listening.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm actually going to now bring up Eli for current events, and then we'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Three events to highlight tonight, a couple big ones. First one is our Easter egg hunt, April 19. This is a popular event. Thousands of people in the community come. Great chance for, for kids to come out. Well-planned event. Not too much to say. It's, it's super popular in our community, so if you're interested at all, make sure you go online, get all the details in order, and, and prepare for this, this activity, which is Saturday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Prospector Park at the softball complex. And next up, another Parks and Rec sponsored event, April Pools Day. This is done in concert with the Police Department, as well as the Superstition Fire Medical District. A chance to focus on, on water safety before, before the pool season really hits. So this is a free event. In the past, I think registration's been required, but this year, you just show up. And there's activities like water safety training, there's, there's a free food, and there's a free swim at the end as well. So, another event targeting kids, getting ready for the, the swim season coming up. And last up, our Building Expo. This is the second year we've done this. This event is focused on building safety and how we, how we provide that service to the community by ensuring that construction is done, done well, buildings are safe, and there's a lot of little activities that go on, but this is really an expo, almost a festival. You show up, and there's a lot of different events going on, a few things to highlight. You'll see in one of the little bubbles there, AJ High School Construction Tech Class. This is a really cool thing that's going on, where these students have built a few things that are going to get raffled off, and some of the proceeds actually of this overall event will go to this, this class of high school students to help them get better equipment and tools for upcoming years. Another thing to highlight is this event is sponsored by WW Clyde, who's a new member of the AJ community. They're, they're building and going to be out here, and so we're grateful for them contributing, you know, multiple thousands, thousands of dollars to this event, and some of their, you know, proceeds go to the high school students, and really excited to have this event in the city, and hopefully people can come out, see that it's growing, and see that we're committed to public, to safety in our, in our buildings, and our Development Services Department is about serving our community and helping. And that is it for this week. Thank you.
My quick comment. On that, the last year we did, was our first year, and we had all kinds of kids involved, and they were just totally thrilled with the idea of being able to, I'll say, climb on some of these huge vehicles, to walk around them and enjoy the feel of what was involved. And talked to a couple of high school students that were there as well, and they were all excited about the, the job opportunities that they didn't realize were local. And so, that was something else. So this really is great to continue it on. We have a real busy schedule tonight. I'm just up to the end of it, so selection of meeting dates and location. We have selection of dates and times and locations for budget work sessions, public hearings, and adoption of tentative and final budgets for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, it's budget time of year. Staff, we are putting final touches on the City Manager proposed budget, and these are the annual meetings that are required by state law to get your budget adopted. So, you have the proposed dates in front of you and the proposed motion, and if there's any questions, we can answer them, but you'll be seeing the draft budget very soon, and then we'll present it publicly on May 5 at 7:00 PM. And then you see the other two dates as proposed, public hearings for both the tentative budget adoption and the final budget adoption.
So we have to have a motion, correct?
Yeah, you have to have a motion.
Deny the motion.
Select those dates.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that a budget work session be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 5, 2025, in the City Council chambers, and that a public hearing and adoption of the tentative budget be held at a special City Council meeting as required by state law at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 19, 2025, in the City Council chambers, and that a public hearing and adoption of the final budget be held at a special City Council meeting as required by law at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 16, 2025, in the City Council chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Solar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay. Call to the public. I'd like to remind everyone that the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. Requests to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, council cannot engage in discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place the matter on future agenda for a council discussion. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have three of them. So Nancy. Aren't, I'm sorry.
Okay, my name's Nancy Andesheck. I live at 925 North Plaza Drive here in Apache Junction. I'm here kind of representing a lot of us old ladies that live on in my group about building permits and what can be done. I'm from Washington, one of the states I've lived in, where we have buildings for these apartments and houses and everything. A certain percentage should be put aside for the low income and for seniors with limited incomes. Too many of my friends have had to move even further out because they can't afford living here in Apache Junction. Myself and some of my friends, we've had to have our extra room out so we can pay our rent and the taxes and such, and we're all afraid that if we grow too fast, we're going to hurt a lot of the people that were born and raised here because they won't be able to afford to live here. So we just want you guys to think about giving permits on how you can help the low income, the seniors, and maybe utilize some of the buildings that have been emptied for years. Thank you.
Donna Carr?
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. Darren, when you talked about being able to see the stars, I'm thinking about how I come up from superior direction, and I still see the glow of Phoenix. If you want to see stars, go to Prescott. You can see stars.
Dashboard.
I guess I'm going to complain today about the fact that I don't think that we should tear down the old dog pound to build a new one. I think that's wasting taxpayer dollars. Now, if you need it bigger, you can put it, add an addition. I understand the rat infestation, and there's certain companies that deal with a way to get rid of the pests without having to worry about hurting animals, cats and dogs. My son was telling me about a, a company that deals with minks and dogs to get rid of the rat infestation, but I don't think we have one of those here in Arizona. It'd be good if we did, but I really don't think that we should tear down the old to build a new one. It's sort of like if something's not broke, don't fix it. I understand the rat infestation. I just don't think that we need to destroy one building to build another building if we could fix the old building and the problem with it. All right, thanks.
Okay. Lori Medina?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Lori Medina, and I'm the director and founder of the nonprofit Leos Integrative Wellness and School of Energy Medicine. And until 2024, I was the owner of Seven Stones Publishing. At the height of its success in 2021, Seven Stones Publishing produced literary works and oracle cards that uplifted voices around the world and promoted creative spiritual expression. In 2020, I became the owner and CEO of The Cardo Manzer Magazine, which grew into the largest tarot and oracle publication in the world, distributed in 22 countries and carried in stores across the West Coast. Through this platform and through my publishing work, I've witnessed how art, symbolism, and intuitive practices can bring people back to themselves with gentleness, dignity, and healing. In these sessions, the artwork itself often becomes a refuge, a focal point that makes it safe to explore difficult emotions without feeling exposed. Again, I know a lot of this is a moot point from last night, but this is what we do in healing spaces, and that is what Apache Junction does so well when it lives in its vision. It creates space for people to be themselves, to feel safe, and to feel seen. In 2023, I partnered with local business, Crystals and Crosses, owned by local resident Linda Huss, and hosted the Holistic Holiday Market right here in Apache Junction, an event that showcased local vendors and welcomed over 300 people, bringing together healers, artists, makers, and families for a day of connection, creativity, and celebration. More recently, I've had the honor of teaching free classes at our local library, creating space for residents to explore intuitive tools in a welcoming, grounded, and educational environment. These experiences have shown me how deeply this community values learning, self-discovery, and opportunities for meaningful connection. My husband is a military veteran, and combined, we have six children. This year, our eldest daughter will graduate from Imagine Prep, our third child to graduate since 2020. Our family is deeply woven into the life of the city through our schools, through service, and through our love of this community. The discussion around city code is an opportunity to realign that vision, not just to regulate, but to uplift, to ensure that our codes reflect the soul of our city, one that values innovation, tradition, and every path to well-being. Apache Junction has always been a place where the desert meets the sacred, where creativity and courage shape what's next. I believe we are ready to lead not just in growth, but in how we honor all ways people live, heal, and thrive. Thank you for your time, for your care, and for the community you are helping to shape with a heart and vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Want to find out what the, for the building permits as far as what?
Can we do a work session, maybe, on the different avenues that we have available for creating low-income housing?
Yes. We certainly can go over our policy.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
We'll do that.
I will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.